Good evening. Will the members and our guests please take their seats? This meeting will now come to order. As all members have received a copy of the call of tonight’s meeting, the reading of the call will be omitted. We are graced by the presence tonight of one of Central Middle School’s finest students, who I will ask in a moment to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. But first, I’d like to tell you a little bit about her. Her name is Grace Fahey, daughter of Susan and Scott Fahey. Susan, of course, being a member of District 11 of the RTM. Grace is in the 8th grade at Central Middle School. She’s a straight A student, plays on three travel sports. She was the North Street School nominee for the Community Service Award. The following year, she was recognized by the town and given a Good Citizen Award at that ceremony for her work at People Against Childhood Epilepsy, Greenwich Town Challenger League for Special Need Students, Neighbor to Neighbor, St. Michael’s Church, Nathaniel Witherell and her work on the Student Council. She continues today doing community work for George Cup, raising money and awareness for Williams Syndrome, the Challenger League, her church, and working on community-based projects like Washington for All, which raises money so that all those can attend, all students can attend the town-wide 8th grade trip to Washington. So without further ado, I’d like to ask Grace Fahey to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone would please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I also would like to recognize Grace’s brother, TJ, who joined her tonight. Thank you to the Fahey family, all for coming. Thank you very much. All right. As all members have received a copy of the proposed minutes of our September 15 meeting, the reading of those minutes will be omitted. I do have one correction on page 6 of those proposed minutes, down towards the bottom, where it talks about the motion to amend offered by our Legislative and Rules Committee. The third bullet point where it says in line 18, insert a period, that should not be a capital A for “after,” it’s all part of the same sentence. Insert a period after “trustees,” so we will change that capitalization to lowercase. Are there any other proposed changes to the minutes? Hearing none and absent objection. The minutes as amended stand adopted upon unanimous consent. All right. Last year at this time, we heard from those who are organizing an event on Veterans Day, and I would now like to recognize Bruce Winningham and Kathy Dureen, Kathy being a member of District 3, to tell us what is upcoming next month. Mr. Winningham.
Good evening. Our group is called the Greenwich Military Covenant of Care. We were formed in 2009, and its purpose was to support military families at the very local level. There are about 800 groups like ours around the country, though we’re only the second one in Connecticut. We’ve done a lot of things that I won’t go into now. I do want to take this chance to thank two people who helped almost consistently in making whatever we did bigger and more broad-reaching and more valuable, and that was Selectman David Tice and Chief of Police Jim Heavy, who each always had ways to hear our ideas and help us enlarge them. One of the things that came out of our group is the Military Moms Network, and there are more mothers in this town who watched a boy or a girl progress through school, academics, sports, do whatever they would normally do, and then upon graduating, choose the military. And then upon entering the military, choose infantry or some other powerless path. Because they were ambitious, because they were aspirational, because they wanted to be around other people who were the best, that took them to dangerous jobs that then create a lot of pride and ambiguous anxiety in the minds of a mom. Kathy Dureen, my colleague here, is one of those moms, and I remember the night I got an email from her saying, “Kathy Dureen, now the mom of a Marine.”[321.12][321.12](Laughter). And as I read her words, there was this pride that any mother would have, but there was this subtext of anxiety that was also there as her son chose his path. And it continues, she just shared with me that he’s volunteered for jump school and JFO, which she wasn’t quite sure, but means forward observer. There is just like, there’s nothing more dangerous. But it’s because her son is that aspirational as a child would be in any other career. If you know of a mother who could use some comfort or some friendship from other moms in this path, call Kathy. Finally, we heard a talk about the Community Walk to Honor Veterans, which we created last year. It’s on November 11 at 10:00 a.m., one hour before the principal ceremony of the town. One thing we want to share with you here quickly as government people, not every state gets an army base, not every county gets a National Guard Armory, but every town gets an American Legion post. And we have a fine one here that preserves a military essence and a presence in the town, and under Chris Hughes, you couldn’t have a better one. I won’t explain what the American Legion is, other than the fact that it’s of the military, by the military, for the military, and if ever things got really, really bad, we would first turn to our American Legion post to find out what do we do. So it’s important to have a good one. But if you attend the American Legion Veterans Day Ceremony, it is by necessity military. They fire 21 guns, they play taps, they lay wreaths in honor of the fallen. You’re given orders, and it’s like a military experience. And what occurred to us is that in this age of Facebook and Pinterest and Spotify and NFL fantasy, there is another audience of people out there that have never come near to a military experience and yet have the same patriotism. And that was the event that we created. And if you’re creating an event, it has to be easy, so this was start at the top of Greenwich Avenue, carry a flag, walk to the bottom. Calculate how many people you think would attend the Veterans Day Ceremony in front of the old post office, wrapping around that flagpole area there. Just do your own math of how many people that is. 450 people came out to our walk last year. And all we really did was provide something that they wanted to do anyway, which is honor those who serve the military. So we’re asking the town to come out again this year. School will be in session, so some of that 450 people were children that we won’t have this year. So we’re further spreading the word among adults to be sure that we at least equal that number. We want to share two other things. First is, like last year, we partnered with the VA Health System in West Hartford, and the photographic images and the video clips that we create from this walk actually have a clinical purpose. They’re used for people in inpatient care who are feeling the struggles of post-traumatic stress and wonder, “Why did I do this? Does anyone know I did it? Did anything matter?” And so images like this help in treatment, and so we’re asking people to come out, to be in those pictures, to be part of that encouragement to those who took such a terrible risk for us. Finally, we’re assembling WWII veterans, and we are surprised at how many we are finding that were never assembled together in the way that we are going to assemble them. Most of the guys I’ve talked to had never heard of any of the names that we’ve pulled together. We already had eight. A guy who flew a P-48 over Burma, a guy who was at the Battle of the Bulge, a guy who was ashore in Normandy. Help us find the rest. It would be heartbreaking to think that a guy reads about this in the newspaper and wonders why he wasn’t there. They’re not going to have to walk down the hill, which is tough at 90, but one of the generous gifts of Mr. Malcolm Prey, who just left us, was that his famous vehicle collection could be used for military purposes, and each of these men is going to ride down in our walk in a 1940s vehicle. So there’s plenty of reasons now to come and participate in this. 10:00 a.m., top of Greenwich Avenue, November 11th, one hour before, within Berlin State for the American Legion event at 11:00 o’clock. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I will see you on the 11th. Irv Porter.
(Inaudible)
Yes.
As they—
Bob Chancy, District 6.
—decreed a Vietnam veteran and a graduate of the United States Military Academy, I like to express my dismay that in a teacher’s contract that’s recently been negotiated—
Whoa, 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 whoa. Talking about the teacher’s contract?
Veterans Day is no longer considered a school holiday, and schools will be open this Veterans Day, and closed in the past.
All right. Thank you. Irv Porter, District 6.
Thank you, Bob. My purpose tonight is to give you the benefit of the observations of the Joint CIP and PIC meetings that were held on the 8th and the 22nd of October.
Do you want to give us those acronym meetings?
The CIP is the Capital Improvement Project Committee, and the PIC stands for Project Implementation Committee, which is responsible for recommending to the First Selectmen and others specific action plans for implementation of the POCD. The First Selectmen convened those two meetings really to kind of integrate the thinking of those two committees. Both of the committees are of an ad hoc nature. They’re not mandated by the town charter, and they serve, of course, at the pleasure of the First Selectmen. In the past, two representatives from the RTM have served as liaison between the RTM and the CIP. I’ve served two terms, and previously Josh Brown served six. Dan Ozymir, District 5, who’s on the Budget Overview Committee, will replace Josh Brown this year, and it’s suggested, Mr. Moderator, that Rebecca Steinfeld, Steinfield, excuse me, of District 11 Finance Committee serves as an alternate. Now, if I may, Mr. Moderator, I’d like to deviate just a minute from this report to acknowledge the role that Josh Brown has played as the RTM liaison to the CIP. I think many of you know and have worked with Josh. His commitment to serve the RTM in that role exemplifies his dedication to the RTM and to the community, and his forthright style and willingness to give his considerable skills for all of our collective benefit. Those of you who know him know that he’s a dedicated guy, he’s one of our leaders, and I think it’s about time, Mr. Moderator, that the RTM showed our appreciation to Josh for the many contributions that he’s given the RTM and the community by giving him a standing O. You know what a standing O is? Stand. Josh?[782.04][782.04](Applause) Thank you. You’ll be missed, but we know you’re hanging around. At least in part, the Joint CIP and POCD participation was precipitated by a report to the RTM dated May 12 that Messers Porter and Brown put together. That full report was made available as a handout. The thrust of that report was quite in keeping with the First Selectmen’s efforts at these two meetings that were held, to probe how the budgeting process could be made more efficient, more positive, more productive. And Mr. Tessie pointed out in detail and disclosed the full process in which the budget is developed, and the reports, if you will deviate from process to the reports, consider that to be content, and how the timing and the availability of that content fits into the overall budget process. So his emphasis was really on the process, and how could that be improved? I think when you hear the cries of the RTM, there are many of us who have felt that it would be better for all of us if we had a better understanding of the process, if we had earlier involvement in the process relative to the budget, because in fact, we are the final stop. Now, the only current long-term plan that is mandated in the state, and mandated in the town, is the POCD, and as you know, it’s required from a state statute point of view that it be updated every 10 years. However, this POCD is clearly different, and the First Selectmen stepped forward and said when it came to the implementation of the action plans, that’s something that he would assure us that he would do. And if you read the scorecard of the 11 items in the POCD, what you’ll see is that nine of the 11 items have been dealt with very positively. Recently, our new town planner, Katie DeLuca, emphasized that in the last CIP PIC meeting that, hey, we’re going to continue to focus on neighborhoods and continue to focus on the things that are in the POCD, because it needs to be, as planning is, a living document. In response to a question on how one offers suggestion on timely improvements or new inclusions in the POCD, Mr. Tessie indicated that they should be directed to him. He also indicated that there are budgeted funds this year, for the first time since 2002, for a survey a town needs, which will be implemented by the Yukon Department of Policy, of Public Policy, and they have some graduate students that are working on that in collaboration with the Castleton, Vermont Survey Institute. Some of you may already have been called in that regard. I know at the District 6 meeting that two people were already called. It’s a telephone survey focused properly in order to come up with the realistic distribution across all of Greenwich. And as I said, the last time a survey like this was done was in 2002. In the Porter-Brown report in May, it also suggested that there be some consideration given to other alternatives relative to a planning policy group who might serve as a focal point for the town. The notion here was that that policy group would be made up of leaders of a number of the institutions, and they would have a work group that would report to them, that work group would be on an ad hoc basis, and the work group would do work on behalf of the policy committee as the policy committee directed them. Stay tuned, maybe that will happen. If you believe like I do that planning is properly deformed, properly defined as predetermining an outcome, that it is a process and it is continuous, then the First Selectmen’s focus to improve the process is certainly laudable. But let me underline that the RTM representation on the CIP is simply ad hoc. It is as liaison. We don’t have a seat at the table. On the other hand, the RTM cries for a more insightful budget, and I think that this openness that has been shown by the First Selectmen to give us an opportunity to participate earlier, having acknowledged that the POCD is the basic plan for the town, is healthy. Remember, though, that from a corporate point of view, often you ask, “What kind of business are we in?” And the question, and I didn’t mean this prophetically, I meant it rhetorically, the question that I asked myself was, “What kind of a business is Greenwich is in?” And my answer was that Greenwich is basically in the real estate business. Eighty percent of our grand lists comes from income from residential real estate. Twenty percent, plus or minus, comes from commercial and other sources of income. So if you think about that in that context, you ask yourself, “All those people that are associated with the budget process must have something to do with this effort in order to make sure that our budgets are directed at our needs.” For example, the Board of Edges Charge is to provide a top-flight educational program, which fortunately is complemented by nearly a third of school-age population that attend just extraordinary Greenwich private education organizations. DPW is the steward of our infrastructure. Parks and Rec is the steward of our natural resources. Fire, Police and GEMS provide safety and security. And other departments in the town provide services that are focused on our residents, and the BET is charged with managing, following, and allocating funds. Of course, many of the services that the town provides don’t suggest that they’re necessarily in the real estate business, but you might ask yourself, when you think about the budget process this year, if it is a budget item that you’re concerned about, unless it’s mandated, does it pass the test of enhancing our real estate values and the quality of life? And if it doesn’t, ask yourself whether it should make the cut. The First Selectmen at these meetings presented information relative to prospective capital projects. He distributed all the information relative to the CIP process, presented the preliminary 2015-16 capital budget. You’ll find this now on the website in great detail. We discussed the process. He opened his doors to members of both of the committees and opens his doors to you and to the public in order to provide other insights in order to make it more effective. Scorecard. The total capital budget for 2015-16 is $79 million, as proposed. This is up from $82 million in 2014-15, up from $66 million in 2013-14, and $58 million in 2012 and 2013. The preliminary list of CIP projects also this year for the first time are coded with references back to the POCD. I’m not going to ask you how many have memorized the POCD. I’ll tell you that in order to prepare this little update, I had to go back and review it myself, and it’s something that I think you should keep handy. If you don’t have a copy, get a copy from the Planning Department. So you should, as a result of this, have some insight as to what’s coming. I mentioned previously that neighborhood plans will be included in the Planning Department’s thinking. The first one is COSCOB. The next one is Eastern Greenwich, which will include Old Greenwich, Riverside, and Myanis, or North Myanis. And then in the queue, you have Byram and Glenville. That concludes my report. Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. All right. Lucia Jansen, Chair of our Budget Overview Committee. Did you want to, you asked for an opportunity? No? Okay. All right. That now brings us to the call for tonight’s meeting. I did email our district and committee chairs that based upon the reports received, I would recommend that we place items 1 and 2 on our consent calendar and then consider the three labor contracts separately. So at this point, I am designating pursuant to our rules the following two items to our consent calendar. Item 1 is a resolution accepting a gift of the purchase and installation of a removable outfield fence at Byram Park. The gift is valued at $25,625, and it is from the United Way. Item 2 is the appointment of Frank Cantelmo to be a member of the Board of Parks and Recreation with a term expiring March 31, 2017. Is there any objection to the designation of those two items to our consent calendar? Hearing none, will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Consent calendar items 1 and 2, and proceed to poll your delegation. Item 3 now comes before us. Al Kaba, Director of Labor Relations.
Mr. Moderator, members of the town meeting, good evening. Item number 3, it is as it appears on your call. Thank you.
All right, and this is a resolution regarding approval of the Teamsters contract. Is that correct?
That’s correct.
All right. May we have the reports of the committees that considered this? We will begin all reports on labor contracts with David Dutch, and Chair of our Labor Contracts Committee.
Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM, this is the first of the three contracts, and tonight you’re going to hear a number of different committees speak to you on these various contracts, and they’ll have a different focus and a different perspective, quite possibly from what we do and what the scope of our review is within the labor contract. So let me briefly remind you of what we view as our two major tasks traditionally within the LCC. First, we make recommendations to the First Selectmen’s representative and to the Board of Education’s negotiating team about what we believe to be appropriate topics or issues for negotiation in various labor contracts coming up, whether on a long-term basis or in regard to a specific contract that’s about to be under negotiation. Second, our second task, after the particular contract has been negotiated, the LCC reviews the negotiated contract in the context of the topics and issues that the town and the union put on the table for negotiation to determine whether the town or the Board of Education have done an acceptable job in negotiating the contract in the fiscal and policy interests of the town. Important to keep in mind here is that in contrast to the standing RTM committees, we focus on the labor negotiations themselves, not on the town budget. Focusing on the budget is actually the task of the Finance Committee and the BOC of the RTM. However, note that I said we make recommendations on possible topics and issues for negotiation, and we review the contract in the context of the issues actually negotiated by the town and the union. We do not demand that particular topics or issues must be negotiated, and we do not insist that our approval of the negotiated contract will be contingent upon certain topics being dealt with in the contract. Why is this so? Why do we make recommendations and not demands? There are two principal reasons. First, the members of the Labor Contracts Committee have traditionally been inclined to respect the expertise and experience of the town’s labor negotiator and the professional advisors advising the Board of Education’s negotiating team. Because they do this on a full-time basis, they have a better sense than any member of the RTM as to what are the likely issues which can best be successfully negotiated in the interest of the town in the context of the pro-labor bias of the state’s labor negotiation and arbitration laws. And they have a better sense of what issues have been teed up, so to speak, in the previous rounds of negotiations in prior years with the particular bargaining unit. Second, the committee makes recommendations rather than demands because, quite frankly, there is no authority that allows the Labor Contracts Committee or any other committee of the RTM to require the First Selectmen or the Board of Education to negotiate specific topics or issues. The First Selectmen and the Board of Education have the sole authority to negotiate labor contracts. As an RTM, we do not have many options when it comes to influencing labor contract negotiations. Other than seeking to persuade through recommendations and providing a sense of what we believe is the general mood of the RTM, the RTM’s only other alternative is to exercise the draconian and unpredictable option of rejecting a contract and sending it back for either negotiation in the context of pending arbitration, possibly mediation, or an arbitration itself. In some cases, mediation before arbitration may be possible, but mediation is no more than a continuation of prior negotiations, but with a neutral supervisor present. Some of you here may recall that this same issue came up a couple years ago in regard to labor contracts, and at that time, the LCC pointed out that if the RTM wanted to exercise the drastic remedy of rejecting contracts because they did not contain specific issues, then the only logical, sensible, and fair thing for the RTM to do was to make those demands known to the First Selectmen or to the Board of Education before the relevant negotiations began and not afterwards. In this particular instance, no member of the Labor Contracts Committee, whether a regular member or an alternate, nor so far as I know, any other member of the, any other committee of the RTM, stated explicitly to the town or the Board of Education before negotiations began or were completed that the RTM acceptance or rejection under consideration this evening would be conditioned on specific concepts or issues being dealt with in the collective bargaining agreement. As it is, the best, the good arbitration results which the town has reached in recent years have been in those cases when, in the course of the negotiations, prior to the submission of the contract to the RTM, the town and the relevant labor union— have voluntarily submitted specific issues to arbitration in the context of the pending negotiation. The town does not have any recent experience with arbitration after a wholesale rejection of the contract by the EATM. That gives you a sense of where we're coming from when we are examining these contracts. And what we're looking at, quite frankly, is, is it better to accept the contract or is it better to go into arbitration? Turning to this particular contract with the Teamsters. In this two-year collective bargaining agreement covering the period from 1 July 2014 to 30 June 2016, the town was able to negotiate the elimination of the POS option under the health care plan. That will become effective at the start of the calendar year, 1 January 2015. Thereafter, all employees will participate in the town's high deductible plan with prescription co-pays. This will result in a significant cost savings since 266 of this collective bargaining unit's 397 employees, more than half, were in the POS option. As a result, although the town's insurance premiums will increase by over 14% in 2015, the insurance costs for this collective bargaining unit will remain roughly the same as in 2014, at slightly over $8 million, due to the savings achieved pursuant to this plan redesign. Another feature that was negotiated was the inclusion of the wellness program, which is an effort to monitor employees to prevent health issues arising and to improve the town's overall experience under the health care plan. The program will cover employees in 2015 and also employee spouses in 2016. Important to note here is that those who do not participate in the wellness program will have to pay an additional percentage of the health care premium. Nevertheless, I should point out that the town is running out of possibilities to tweak the design of the town's health care plans. And you'll see that when we discuss the teachers' contract. As a result, this strategy of the town of trying to reduce overall costs of a negotiated contract by tweaking the health care plan design is not going to be a viable option for much longer. As a result, the town may have to engage in a fundamental rethinking of how it offers health care to its employees as the date for the imposition of the so-called Cadillac tax under the Affordable Care Act approaches in 2018. The town also negotiated a GWI of 2.5% for each of the two years of this contract. That negotiated percentage, 2.5%, puts the town in the middle of the pack, so to speak, in terms of the percentage GWIs achieved for the periods 2014-2016 by various towns in Connecticut. Thus, slightly more than half of the negotiated GWI settlements in other towns for those periods have been above 2.5%. A few were at the 2.5% negotiated by Greenwich, and fewer than half were at less than 2.5%. There are no additional wage costs affecting the total wage settlement here since the Teamsters have no step compensation. Among other features negotiated were electronic payroll payment and a gradual delay in the payment of the payroll to one week after the payroll being compensated is completed. I know that sounds a little complicated. The latter has been recommended to the town as best practice since, under the current arrangement, the employees are being paid on the last day of the very payroll period for which they are supposed to work in order to earn the payroll that's being paid to them. As it is, this feature, the payroll payment delay, will in all likelihood not be implemented until late next year after all collective bargaining units in the town have agreed to this arrangement in this cycle of contract negotiations with all unions. The town still has not yet negotiated this feature into all the contracts. There were some changes in working condition. Thus, Teamsters working within the schools will give up not only Veterans Day, as you've heard, but also Columbus Day as holidays since the Board of Education is going to have classes on those two dates in the future. The employees will be compensated with discretionary holidays. In addition, the Board of Education will be allowed to hire temporary workers in the summer months when the schools close. You'll note that in the Teamsters and Police Resolutions that are set out in the call, they speak of approving any provisions that are contrary to the town charter. This is standard language for these resolutions that the town has used for years to avoid a certain ambiguity between the contract and the town charter. Nevertheless, it was determined, after these resolutions were submitted to the town clerk for this call, that in fact, there are no conflicting provisions between these contracts and the town charter. As a result, that second paragraph is unnecessary in this particular instance, but it's not harmful, frankly, to leave it there. At our meeting on 14 October, four regular members were present. So the senior alternate delegates' vote was included in the official vote of the committee. In that context, the committee voted 5-0 to recommend that the RTM approve this contract, primarily, I think, because of the POS savings and the sense that the GWI was not aberrant or arbitrary. As you know, it's a tradition in the LCC that all members of the committee, whether regular members or alternates, participate in discussions and their votes are noted, even if not part of the committee's official vote. The other alternate, who was also in attendance, voted not to recommend approval. That alternate's view was that the RTM should not approve the contract and should send the contract to negotiation and possibly eventual arbitration, where the town should, in the context of such negotiation/arbitration, seek to negotiate that first, the GWI should be no greater than 1.7%, which is the current rate of inflation roughly for the Northeast region; and second, the rate of contribution of employees to the existing defined benefit plan should be greater than the current 5%. Nevertheless, for the reasons I noted above, the Labor Contracts Committee voted 5-0 to recommend approval of this contract with the Teamsters by the RTM.
Thank you. Mike Warner, Chair of our Finance Committee.
What is there left to say? The Finance Committee addressed this item, and we had with us Al Kava. We had one of our own members, Steve Rubin, from District 8, who was a professional benefits consultant. And he was very helpful in understanding some of the thickets involved in the benefit plans. And we had excellent data provided by the BOC, who, the BOC team provided each of us with basic data on inflation rates and fundamental quantitative data that we could use to measure these contracts against. I'm not going to repeat everything that David said, but I would just, as a clarification, make a few comments. One is, the POS plan stands for Point of Service Plan. And it's a standard plan where everything is paid for. You might make a $25 contribution when you see your doctor. And changing from that to a high deductible plan is a significant change. And benefit carriers recognize at least once an immediate, in this case, a 14% reduction in the cost of the plan. So that means that the plan for one year, you'll see no increase. As a matter of fact, I think the cost of benefits will go down by about a half a point on the first year of this contract. However, having said that, that means future years, benefits will increase at the same rate that the rest of the world is. We know that our group has a little bit different than other groups. Our average employee tends to be a little older and have slightly larger families, so our experience is more costly. Our benefit plans cost us more than other groups. It happens, just our demographics. The other issue I would mention, because it will come up later, is when we talk about wellness, we're talking about not a savings today. We're talking about a program that will have savings tomorrow. And what it means is, we would ask an employee to fill out a, the town would not ask, a third party disassociated from the town would ask each member of the plan to fill out a questionnaire, have some blood drawn, and maybe have some other indices of health. And that third-party group would then turn around to the employee and say, "Here's the state of your health. Would you like to do something about it?" Like I said, this is not something that affects costs today. But holding a mirror up to each employee can only be beneficial in terms of bending the curve or changing the direction by one degree of that aircraft carrier that is the high cost of medical care. And when an employee group agrees to this, it's not insignificant. Although the dollar impact is not great today, it can be of significant impact down the road. You've already heard the major cost drivers here. They're 2.5% GWI. And the cost of contract over two years is roughly 4.8%. I won't go into the details that David did because it would be repetitious. I would say the following. We had one negative vote. And that negative vote, I think, expressed a concern we all have. And that is, with a 1.7% inflation and we're paying 2.5%, where's the productivity that we're getting in return? It's a fair question to ask. Can we do better in requiring, if we're paying X amount of dollars as a general wage increase, increases in productivity in return for that? And so that was pretty much the expression of the no vote. And the final vote of your Finance Committee was 11-0-1. Thank you.
Thank you. John Harkins, Chair of our Town Services Committee.
We were fortunate to hear Mr. Detchin and Mr. Warner tell us why, all the ins and outs of the contracts. We had the benefit of Al Kava at our meeting. And we voted 6-3-3 on the first contract and 7-2-3 on the second one. The concerns were that we felt we didn't have enough information. That's partly our responsibility. And accordingly, one of the things that we're doing in the Town Services Committee is to restructure our calendar so that we're doing more work earlier. That's partly at the instigation of a conversation among the chairs of the various committees and the Budget Overview Committee. And we're grateful for that advice. We plan to follow it. There isn't much more to be added except that there was concern that with a low rate of inflation, do we really need to pay as much as we are paying? And that's been ably discussed before, so I won't ask you to listen to that again. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Lucia Jansen, are you giving a report on behalf of the Budget Overview Committee? All right. Lucia Jansen, Chair of our Budget Overview Committee.
Good evening. My name is Lucia Jansen. I'm the Chair of the Budget Overview Committee. The BOC had on its agenda at its regularly scheduled October meeting the discussion of the three labor contracts, given that labor costs represent 3/4 of the town's operating budget and that these three contracts represent 60% of the workforce, with roughly $350 million of spending over the next two to three years. A worksheet that highlighted the contract terms was created by the Chair, who also sits on the Labor Contracts Committee. After a brief discussion, the BOC members decided to take a formal vote on the three contracts. Because a decision was made that evening, representatives from the town, Board of Ed, or unions were not present for the discussion. The BOC thanks the town leaders and the employee unions who worked on these contracts. The BOC also values and appreciates the work of the town employees under these contracts. The basis of the committee's perspective is grounded in the BOC's May 2014 research report that includes, among other points, the town's spending since 2004 through 2013 has far outpaced Greenwich median incomes and the region's low inflation rate of 1.3% or even the higher 1.7% national rate. Also, at the time of the BOC discussion on the contracts, there were questions on the labor contract process in the event the RTM rejects any of these three contracts. The prospect of binding arbitration was a factor in some of the committee votes. The BOC vote for item number three was as follows: 5-3-2, with District 2 and 3 absent. The majority of the BOC felt the contract did not merit a no vote, even though the total cost of the contract of $81 million, which is a 4.86% increase over the two years, exceeds the BOC's desired rate of increase. I will be disclosing the other votes with the other contracts. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our committee reports on item three. Discussion on item three. Ms. Jansen, did you want to address this individually? No? Okay. Joan Caldwell, District 10.
Mr. Moderator, members of town meeting. Normally, when we get to a vote on a union contract, we consider it the end of the game or the end of the process. We put that contract away and we move on to other things. But in the last six months or so, certainly since the last budget session and in discussions about these contracts, I have sensed, I have heard, and I feel it myself, a sense of frustration. We, every year in this town, have been paying anywheres from 1% to 2.5% new money to employees, a combination of GWI and step increases. While all the time, our own incomes are growing at 1.7% this year, if you believe the Social Security Administration, 1.1% if you accept the rate of interest at the People's Bank. And for those of you that are still employed, you might be doing slightly better. But the bottom line is, we're outspending ourselves. Now, what to do about it? There are three contracts before you tonight, and my comments are relevant to all three. We're living in a state where the rules and regulations are stacked against municipalities. That's just the simple fact of it. If you read the statutes that govern negotiations, you realize you've got one hand tied behind you. If you look at the arbitration rules, the other hand is tied. So the advantage to turning down a contract really isn't very great. As a matter of fact, the liability is much greater. And since contract negotiations are more about what goes on the table, what the employees will discuss with the employer, than about the actual dollars, the dollars that come out of the settlements are a budgetary item. And that's what I want to bring to your attention. The process on these contracts is not ending tonight. It just is starting. You need to look at the dollars that are going to be necessary to implement the contracts in the next three or four, next two or three budgets, and see how we raise those dollars. See where we squeeze them. Because the BET has just set an operation guideline of 2%. But the contract, the first contract before you tonight, asks for 2.5. Something is going to have to give somewhere. The Education and the Finance Committees of this body have the power of the purse with regard to the budgets that they oversee. It's up to them and to other committees to sit down this month, next month, and begin to frame up what the costs of the contract are, what you like and what you don't like, and to present it to the departments that you work with, to the BET Budget Committee, to the full BET, and carry the message into the public hearings, and then to the budget meeting next May. In case they don't get the word between now and May, we do have the power to reduce the budget ourselves. the budget ourselves. We do a lot of talking about how bad things are, but we don’t start early enough. This is the start for these three groups. There is one other thing you can do, and that is talk among yourselves. Committees work together and deal with the budget as a whole. I have been in this town meeting 50 years. I have watched a lot of groups try to get the town finances under control, even back to the days when we had a Greenwich Taxpayer Association. And it never worked. It never worked because we were too divided, too fractionized. If we don’t start pulling together, you might just as well sign your paycheck over, because that’s the way we’re heading. One final word, and this is really more in regards to the teachers’ contract, but then I won’t bother you anymore tonight. There is a member of the Education Committee who said he has been looking for information from the Board of Education for several years and has not gotten it. There may be other committees in the body that have been looking for information, for data, data that helps him and them understand whether the contract before them is good. Hasn’t had it. Stop asking as an individual. Work as a committee. Put it in writing and send it to the department or the group, and insist on it. Tell them that your vote on the contract next time will be contingent on getting this backup data. In other words, folks, let’s start going to work on this.
Further discussion on item 3. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, item number 3, and proceed to poll your delegation? I have the result of the vote on the two consent calendar items. That was acceptance of the gift from the United Way of the outfield fence and strike sum, and the appointment of Frank Cantelmo to be a member of the Board of Parks and Recreation. Those in favor: 178. Opposed: 2. Abstaining: 0. The consent calendar items have carried. Before we take up the next item on the call, I neglected at the beginning of the meeting to ask for any interested volunteers, knowledgeable and willing volunteers, to help us coordinate with Town Hall and update at least of our RTM directory, and perhaps to form a technology committee that could take into account, you know, could consider any other initiatives we would like to undertake. But at a minimum, we need to update that directory, and if anyone is interested, please contact me. I’ll also send out an email to our district and committee chairs on that. All right. Item number 4 now comes before us. Once again, Alcava, Director of Labor Relations.
Item number 4 is the labor settlement between the town and the Silver Shield Association. It is as it appears on the call.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution on item 4 has been moved and seconded. Once again, we will hear from David Detchin, Chair of our Labor Contracts Committee.
This collective bargaining agreement with the Silver Shield Police Union runs from 1 July 2014 to 30 June 2017, and it eliminates, as of 1 January 2015, the POS Plan option within the healthcare plan for the union, much in the same way as with the Teamsters. In this case, 142 of the 167 employees in this collective bargaining agreement were in the POS option, I guess 3/4 or more than 3/4. So the elimination of the POS option will reflect a significant cost savings for the town in regard to the healthcare costs for this bargaining unit. In addition, the high deductible healthcare program for this bargaining unit will increase from the $1,500 slash $3,000 to the $2,000, $4,000 deductible structure that’s been accepted by other unions, and that will start 1 January 2015. Because of this plan redesign, although the healthcare premiums for the town will increase by over 14% for 2015, the healthcare costs for this bargaining unit will decline by 10.34% in the 2014-15 fiscal year, and as estimated, since we don’t know exactly what will be the premium increase in the following year, it’s estimated they will decline by a further 2.62% in the 2015-16 fiscal year, with total healthcare costs in each year for this bargaining unit at a bit over $3 million, despite these anticipated increase in premiums. In addition, the town provided for the introduction of the wellness program under the healthcare plan, as in the Teamsters Union, and this, as we noted earlier, and as Mike Warner noted, this is really designed to monitor and prevent healthcare issues going forward. It’s not an immediate cost savings, but it’s designed to improve the town’s experience under the plan and hopefully result in cost savings. As in the Teamsters contract, if the member of the bargaining unit does not participate in the wellness program, that member will incur an additional premium cost. This union also adopted the automated payroll payment system and also agreed to the gradual delay in the payroll payment. The GWI that was agreed to was 2.5% for each of three years, which is in the middle range of the GWI settlements under MIRA for these particular contract years for policemen. Thus, slightly more than half of the various towns that have agreed to GWI for those years agreed to increases greater than 2.5%. A few were at the 2.5% rate agreed to in Greenwich, and fewer than half were at lower than 2.5%. I should point out that the salaries of Greenwich police officers at most ranks are in the upper third of comparable salaries paid by police departments in Fairfield County, although Greenwich is not at the absolute highest level. Nevertheless, our policemen are in the top third, or at least at the top of the second third of the various ranks, not so much because of the GWIs agreed to in this particular contract, but quite frankly, because the GWIs negotiated over the years have had the effect of pushing the salaries fairly high. Let me just say a bit about this arbitration process in Connecticut and how it is stacked against municipalities. For example, it’s a baseball arbitration, which means that the arbitrators accept the last best offer of either the union or the town. So, for example, if the town were to go into the negotiation and propose a GWI as its last best offer of 1.3%, 1.7%, and the union were to propose 2.75% or 2.8%, because a large number of towns in this area have accepted a GWI of greater than 2.5%, the risk is there that the union, that the arbitrators would in fact take the 2.75% or the 2.8% and not the 1.3% or 1.7% that was proposed by the town. The arbitrators cannot average the two to come up with a number. It’s either or. They pick one or the other. In that particular scenario, of course, the result would be that we would actually end up paying more as a GWI than the 2.5% that we had negotiated. This bias, so to speak, where we’re more or less captive to whatever happens to be the median, so to speak, of labor settlements, is one of the reasons why it’s so difficult for us to get the issues of productivity and to get our GWIs somewhere near inflation. Another significant development within the contract is that outside work done by police officers while off duty, such as managing traffic at utility construction sites and the like, will be brought in-house into the police department and regulated within the department to ensure a fair and equitable distribution of such assignments amongst the officers. In addition, the contract provides a provision which permits the town to implement, without any further negotiations with the Silver Shield, a mandatory medical provider network for workers’ compensation medical services. This language is already in several of the collective bargaining agreements with other bargaining units in the town, and the town estimates that implementation of such a preferred provider network could reduce the town’s medical costs in connection with workers’ compensation by about 7%. At our meeting on 14 October, only four of the five regular members were in attendance, so the vote of the senior alternate counted as part of the official vote. The vote, the official vote, was 4-1 to recommend that the RTM approve this contract. The one member voting no did so because that member believed that the issue of establishing a defined contribution pension arrangement for new hires should have been addressed in the negotiations. The other alternate also in attendance, was also in attendance, and that alternate voted to recommend that the RTM reject the contract and send it to negotiation or possibly mediation or arbitration. The alternate would have requested the town to negotiate in the contract, first, that a defined contribution plan or a third-tier defined benefit plan for new hires be established; second, that the employee contribution to the defined benefit plan be increased from the current 5%; and, third, that the GWI be no more than 1.7% in any year, which is the recent rate here nationally. Ironically enough, I should point out in this particular context that if either this Teamsters or the police contract were to be rejected and sent back by the RTM for further negotiation or arbitration, if that process were to take more than about 30 or 40 days, 45 days from tonight, then the elimination of the POS option in regard to the two bargaining units could not be implemented on 1 January 2015 for the calendar year 2015, even if later the parties did agree to eliminate the POS. Obviously, then, the significant cost savings in eliminating the POS in 2015 would have been lost to the town. As I say, the votes of our committee to recommend this contract for approval by the RTM was 4-1.
Thank you. I have the result of the vote on the Teamsters contract. That’s item number 3. Those in favor: 146. Opposed: 35. Abstaining: 0. That item has carried. Michael Warner, Chair of our Finance Committee.
Your Finance Committee took this up. I think David has pretty much covered the waterfront on what this contract is. I would add a few comments. As your Finance Committee dealt with these three contracts, each subsequent contract generated more heat than perhaps light, and more interesting conversation about the individual contracts themselves. I would add to David’s comments another factor in arbitration, which, in my opinion, is unbelievable, and that is that the state arbitrators consider the town’s ability to pay as one of the factors in determining whether or not to arbitrate on behalf of a town or the union, the ability to pay. I have, in another life, was responsible for comp and benefits and labor negotiations. I’ve never heard of this before, but you should be aware of it, and it’s one of the things that makes it difficult for us when we do take these things to arbitration. It’s not a slam dunk. It’s certainly something we can argue, but it’s a very unusual criteria to use. With respect to this particular contract, we had a broad-ranging discussion. I was the person on the Labor Contracts Committee who voted against this, and I voted against it because the defined benefit plan, I think, is throughout Fairfield, is, the trend is, these things are being negotiated out in favor of a defined contribution plan. No police officer would be affected, only new hires, and I didn’t understand why the town did not negotiate for that, and I wanted to send a message. And I must say to you, I did change my vote on this Finance Committee and voted for the contract because of the extensive cost reductions obtained for the benefit plan going to the high deductible plan. I would also comment that not only are we in the top third in terms of pay, we have no problems with turnover, we have no problems recruiting the people we want to recruit. I think it’s to the town’s advantage that they’ve set a standard that says we will hire and pay for college graduates in this category, and I think that’s personally an excellent idea. It probably cost us a few more dollars, but it’s a good strategy. After much discussion and back and forth, your Finance Committee voted in favor of this, 11-0-1. The reasons for the no votes were the same as you’ve heard before. What kind of productivity improvements are we receiving for a 2.5% GWI? Why was there no change in employee contributions for pension and benefits, which is now at 5%? Why didn’t it go up a few more percent, especially where in the top 1/3 of pay levels in Fairfield? Thank you.
Thank you. John Harkins with the Town Services Report.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator and members of the RTM. We voted 7-2-3, as I mentioned previously. Districts 1 and 12 voted against, and Districts 2, 5, and 7 abstained due to lack of what they thought was insufficient information. The one, or a couple of areas that were brought up, we applauded the decline in crime rate, of course, in the town. That’s been wonderful. But at the same time, we have to ask if the staffing levels are correct, if that’s the case. So there was concern about that, and also about the defined contribution plan. That said, vote was 7-2-3. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Lucia Janson with the Budget Overview Report.
The majority of the Budget Overview Committee voted against the contract. The vote was 1-7-2, with District 2 and 3 absent. District 11 voted yes. District 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, and 10 voted no, and District 1 and 12 abstained. Some of the comments made on those who voted against the contract was the cost of the contract of $69 million had a compounded increase of 8.50, far higher than the rate of inflation. Yes, we do have very well-paid police force, the highest paid in the first step and in the fifth step. They’re the fifth highest in the 22-town rankings. And again, the retirement. There is no change with a new tier in the retirement plan. There is no higher contribution to the existing defined benefit plan, and in fact, they get a 401K on top of, with an increase of $1,850 on top the defined benefit, with a town healthcare cost increase of $11.31. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion on item 4. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Okay.
Stephen Rubin with the Labor Contracts Committee. With apologies to Mr. Detchin, I just want to provide a little clarity on what we’re referring to as a wellness program. Currently, the town contributes 90%, subsidizes the health plan at 90%, and the employee through payroll contributions contributes an additional 10%. The change in the contract is reducing the town subsidy from 90% to 85% in the first year, and then to 80% in the second year. The wellness program already exists where the town supports the blood test and the health risk assessment that employees are taking. The change is that this is now a wellness incentive program. So where the town subsidy is reduced to 85%, those employees that participate in the wellness program will get an additional subsidy of 5%, which would bring them back up to the 90% that they previously had. So I just want to make sure people understand in terms of this contract with what we’re getting, because it might come up in the following conversation, and I didn’t want to bring it up in a context of what we’re not getting.
Thank you. Lucia Janson?
Yes. Hi. I wanted to speak as an individual RTM member. I just wanted to make the comment that a lot of talk is in regards to mediation and arbitration, and I just wanted to share that there are many wonderful examples across Fairfield County where, without arbitration or mediation, this final step, they are working to fairly and collaboratively work with ref- to fairly and collaboratively work with reform on these contracts that's fair to the employee, fair to the town, and maintaining quality services. Thank you.
Further discussion on Item 4. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, Item Number 4, and proceed to poll your delegation? Item Number 5 now comes before us. Barbara O'Neil, Chair of our Board of Education.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, and members of the RTM. Item Number 5 is the agreement between the Board of Education and the Greenwich Educational Association, and it appears that it is on the call. Thank you.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on Item 5 has been moved and seconded. David Detchin, Chair of our Labor Contracts Committee.
Mr. Moderator, members of RTM, two down and one to go. State law requires that a collective bargaining agreement covering teachers has to be negotiated a year in advance of its initial effective date. Accordingly, this is a two-year contract, which will commence on 1 July 15 and terminate 30 June 17. For the reasons outlined in the Explanos, the term of this contract was limited to two years, to enable the parties to negotiate the next contract at a time when there's, hopefully, a bit more clarity as to what are the consequences of the so-called Cadillac Tax under the Affordable Care Act. The current estimate is that, starting in 2018, that Cadillac Tax could result in an additional cost of over $5 million to the town, on the basis of the healthcare plans of the town as currently structured. Since such a large percentage of the town's employees are teachers, and are included within this collective bargaining unit, which covers 871 employees, whatever is done in the next teacher's contract in regard to healthcare will have a major impact on the town's overall healthcare costs and the town's tax costs under the Affordable Care Act. The GWI under this two-year contract is remarkably low, only 0.68% and 0.88% respectively in the two years. These figures, of course, are well below the GWI found in the other two contracts we are reviewing tonight, and in fact, it is below the GWI that's been agreed to in about six other contracts with teachers within this area during the month of September. However, the incremental steps, incremental step costs are substantial. In fact, they're probably the highest percentage incremental wage costs of any collective bargaining unit in the town. This is in part due to the fact that this is such a large collective bargaining unit, and the fact that there has been a two-year freeze in step advancements under the contract currently in force. Accordingly, the overall wage cost increase for the two years is 2.99% per year. Nevertheless, despite this significant overall wage increase, this is actually relatively favorable in regard to these other teacher contracts that have been negotiated in September in this area. There was one other teacher's contract that had an overall GWI plus increment of 2.99%. All others were at 3% or higher. The contract, the teacher's contract includes the same provisions in regard to electronic payment transfers, and the one-week delay in payment for the most recent payroll period, as we've discussed with the other two contracts. However, this bargaining unit was the first major bargaining unit to adopt the high deductible healthcare plan of the town, so significant healthcare savings were achieved under the current contract, the one that's currently in force until 2015. Thus, those savings under the contract currently in force were, in fact, substantial, and we had a total cost of settlement increase of only 3% under the current contract. Because we don't have those POS savings in this contract, the, we don't have the benefit of those healthcare cost savings, the total cost of settlement increase into this contract is 6.61%. Nevertheless, under this contract, the POS option for first-year hires has been eliminated as of 1 January 2016, and such new hires will go straight into the high deductible plan. But since the population losing this option is a relatively small one, the savings costs are correspondingly modest. In the meeting in the Labor Contracts Committee on 14 October, there was considerable consternation amongst the members of the committee that this contract does not include the wellness program, or wellness incentive plan, as my colleague Steve Rubin pointed out, adopted by the other two unions, whose contracts are under consideration tonight. And one member of the committee noted subsequently that he had voted to recommend approval of the contract with significant reservations, due to the failure of the teachers' union to accept that wellness program. We understand that the Board of Education may have hesitated to push for adoption of the wellness program, out of the concern that such a push would result in an even higher wage compensation as a reciprocation, but a number of the LCC members were unhappy that the opportunity to achieve lower healthcare costs through the adoption of the program had been lost here. Nevertheless, the committee, with four regular members and the senior alternate voting, voted 5-0 to recommend that the RTM approve this contract as requested by the Board of Education. Implicit in the Labor Contracts Committee review of a contract as negotiated is an analysis by each member of the Labor Contracts Committee as to whether that member believes the town has more to gain or to lose in going into additional negotiations, or in the case of this teacher's contract directly into arbitration. In terms of what is gained, the question is whether the members of the LCC conclude that the town is likely to be successful in including a desired contract term requested in the contract negotiations. Likewise, the analysis concludes an assessment of whether something which previously had been negotiated in the contract could, in fact, be lost through further arbitration. In this context, a number of folks on the committee concluded that nothing significantly better was likely to be gained through arbitration, since it is not clear what the implementation of the wellness program, the next teacher's contract, will be, if there is a fundamental restructuring of the town's healthcare plans by 2018. The modest cost savings of the POS option might be lost if there were arbitration, and there is distinct risk that in arbitration, the total wage cost increase of 2.99% would be lost, and that an award in arbitration could, in fact, be over 3%, especially since the GWI was so low in each year. In fact, there's no other GWI in these contracts settled in September that is below 1%. The other alternate, whose vote was not included in the official action, would have voted no, and would have recommended that the contract be sent to arbitration, presumably in order to have the board, first, limit wage increases to no greater than inflation rate of 1.7%, and, second, to address the issue of differential pay. As indicated, the official vote of the LCC was 5-0-0.
Thank you. Josh Brown, Chair of our Education Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Your Education Committee met last Monday, October 20, to discuss this item. We had Peter Scher, who's part of the nominating committee, and Ms. O'Neil, who's the Chair of the Board of Ed, and Ms. Caldwell from Labor Contracts, helping us with this. I think you've heard the points about the two-year versus three-years, so I won't go over that. The GWI, the reintroduction of the steps to really focus on, I'll call it, the younger, the earlier-tenured teachers, to encourage them to stay. We did branch into a lot of discussion around what is keeping the teachers with us, and why do they leave, when do they leave? That was a reference to the prior speaker and the request that came out of District 10 for some additional information, which was provided late today. So I'd say the dialogue is open and moving, and we'll continue to follow up on that. Also, there are some studies that have been done last fiscal year or last calendar year. There's an updated version of that that will be coming out in January, and the Education Committee will be picking that up and furthering the discussion, so we won't let that loop get left out there. There was some clarifying language on the high deductible plan, which increased the teachers' contribution from 11% to 12%, no change in the dental. The key interest was described to us both by Mr. Scher and by Labor Contracts, that when they went into this negotiation, they got really what they were looking for out of it, they felt it was a fair agreement. The wellness item has been raised. You should know that, you know, more than 35%, 40% of the teachers already are participating or doing the wellness testing activities. It is the highest voluntary participation of any bargaining unit, and so, you know, yes, we're disappointed that they didn't get it, but as the previous speaker mentioned, you know, there's still negotiation to come around next time, and it will be certainly, you know, continue to be on the table for those, was what was assured to us, I'll say, in our discussions. We also looked at the contract, the version that was redlined and up on the RTM website. We identified some issues, mainly with dates that weren't correct. I did review a version of the document late this afternoon, this evening. We're going to say most of them have been adjusted. I did find two things that need to be changed, but they're really kind of scribbler in natures from my perspective, just changing dates, no change in dollars, per se. And so, was assured by Mr. Scher that the final version would be updated and circulated very shortly, so I feel comfortable that the contract, the agreement, is in good order. Let's see, we did spend much of the time then talking about the evaluation system. The teachers do have an evaluation system. We talked about other activities and requests that they are participating in, so it was a very healthy discussion. Our vote on the item was 11 in favor, none opposed, with one abstention. The abstention was raising the concern about the agreement addressing the issues that we have in retaining our teachers and attracting the best and brightest, and so we will continue to foster that dialogue as that moves forward. Your Education Committee does believe this is a fair agreement and should be approved by the RTM. So that is our report from Education, 11-0-1. Mr. Moderator, a point of personal privilege, first, thank you for, you know, allowing me to serve on the CIP Committee, it's been a joy, quote, "joy." To Earth Porter, thank you for those very kind words, I didn't know, thank you. To all of you, for all of your support in my role in doing that, I've reached out to many of you for counsel and ideas through those discussions, so thank you. And Mr. Tessie, thank you for keeping the door open and really helping a good, open communication. Thank you all.
I have the result of the vote on the Silver Shield Contract, that's item number 4. Those in favor, 131; opposed, 49; abstaining, 1. That item has carried. Michael Warner with our Finance Committee Report.
I'll try to be brief and not repetitious. We met on October 20. We had with us Peter Scher, Steve Rubin, who I mentioned earlier is a professional consultant. We had the BOC data with us outlining some broad information, and we had very broad and active audience participation. We had a wide range of interests, from parents who were interested in class size, to individuals who were very concerned about total contract costs. I will not reiterate the fundamentals of the contract. There was broad disappointment in the rejection of a wellness program, which the town pays 90% of, and is a beneficial program for the employee, and was turned down by the union, and we didn't fight for, and we didn't get, something that should be, many people thought was a fundamental, good thing for both sides, on both sides of the table. Beyond wellness, we had a discussion of how we can send a message to the town that says, if we have an employee group that's paid well above the going rate for the job, there's no problem in recruitment, there's no problem with retention, how much beyond the going rate do we want to pay? We had a vote, and the vote was 7-5-0, and the 5 was fundamentally driven by the wellness issue, productivity pay with general wage increases above inflation, and this was a bit of a symbol, a symbolic vote, I think, for all the contracts, that said, we need to find a way. Here, that Mr. Scher pointed out, that while this contract is a 3% contract, the BOE is committed to only a 2.5% budget increase, which means 5% is coming out of programs for our kids. And at some point, the increases for employees, whether it's teachers or others, is going to cross that 3% mill rate increase, and we need to find a way to address that issue in the future. So that was the reason, I think, for the 7-5-0 vote that you have from your Finance Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Lucia Jansen with the Budget Overview Report.
All right, with our final contract, the vote was 1 in favor, 8 opposed, 1 abstaining. District 11 voted yes. District 1, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, and 10 voted no, and District 12 abstained. The $210 million contract increase in two years of 8.79%, exceeding both inflation rate and Greenwich median incomes, was the primary driver. Other comments was, a lot of talk on the increase of the contract, but not where the teachers' entry point, at first step and through the 13 steps, our teachers are the highest-paid teachers in the state currently, before this contract goes into play. Even with the new contract, there is a 7.5% difference between the second-highest-paid teacher level. And the point here is that if you, it's interesting that Greenwich is not the highest-income town in the state of Connecticut. Believe it or not, we're number eight. So those other towns that have higher incomes were actually outpacing them. So the total healthcare costs have been discussed, and the wellness issue, so I won't go into that. Also, there was the retiree healthcare that was left unchanged. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion on Item 5. Mr. Conway, District 2.
Just briefly, I am a delegate to the BOC. Unfortunately, I couldn't make the meetings. I have voted no against all these contracts, I will vote no against this one. The sole reason, it's way above everything, inflation, the whole kit and caboodle. It's evident that the people in our town that are in charge of, say, negotiating and involved in this are not getting the word. We are tired of giving these contracts out that are far above the cost of living. You guys got to start to listen, because we've had it. Thank you.
Further discussion on Item 5. Mr. Pruner, District 10.
Good evening, RTM members. I have, this is not a good contract for the town. We're looking at a 3% rise, but the steps are added back in, and for many of these teachers, you're going to be looking at 5% and 6%. The, I was the one who asked for the information about teachers leaving, quitting, retiring, and I finally got it at 5:05 today. And it turns out that while we pay our first-year teachers 18% more than Darian and 13% more than New Canaan, and not surprisingly, we get a lot of applicants and not a lot of people leaving. people leaving. The people that do leave, the majority reason for them leaving is retirement. Among the others, when you look at the appendices that I got today, there are comments about the number of initiatives that they have. There are other comments about relocating and moving out. Salary and our wages are not a major issue for our teachers leaving, but yet we continue to compensate them. If you remember when we had the massive declines in the stock market, we voted the teacher's salary at over 4% for three years during the heart of the Depression. They're now getting their steps back, and for many of them, they're going to be getting 4%, 5%, and 6% raises. The health care costs are going to be going up 10%. The overall cost of the contract, we're looking at 6% at a time when we have less than 2% inflation. Add to that the fact that the BET is going to limit increases to 2% means, out of that other small percentage of the budget, we're going to have to take, the increase that goes to the large amount, to the large amount of the teachers, is going to be a huge amount in a much smaller portion of the budget. The contract, however, I've been told, was not negotiated so that it could be arbitrated. And the belief is, even though Al Kava did not come to the Board of Education meeting, is that we would be at a significant disadvantage. So therefore, I can't vote for this budget, but I will abstain, and I would recommend that other people abstain also. Thank you.
Christine Edwards, District 8.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator and all our colleagues here. I've been on the Budget Overview Committee for about 12 years and have seen a real evolution and research into the entire aspect of education here in the town of Greenwich. I'm also a real estate agent, and thank you, Earth, for that information that real estate does run. And I do want to tell you that I have clients who are in Rye, who would be paying about a $15,000 tax if they were in Greenwich, and happily are paying a $60,000 tax in Rye. And I'm like, why would you do that? And they say, well, it's deductible, among other reasons, but they love their education system. We're always looking at why we're the highest-paid teachers in Connecticut, but, my friends, we are not the highest-paid teachers in the area. Those of you who know what the teachers receive in New York know that in four years, a teacher can be receiving, ready for this, $100,000 in New York. It's a lot of money. Other areas will also give certain incentives for teachers to live in the area. Now, there's another difference between Connecticut teachers and New York. If you're in New York, you receive Social Security as well as your pension. In Connecticut, you only receive your teacher's pension. You do not receive your Social Security. Some of the people who are saying that they're leaving for relocating will probably say that, because they're not going to say, well, I'm going to go to New York to teach, or something else. They may say, oh, well, I live in Watertown and commute here, and I don't want to continue doing that, especially with high gas and everything else. But the people who are living in New York, who I'm looking to move to Connecticut, many of them are extremely happy with their systems, where their teachers are being paid much more than our teachers. And that issue of taxes, we are a very, very low-paid tax. For a $400,000 home in Monroe, they're paying $12,000 taxes. That's tremendous compared to a $400,000 home in Greenwich that would be paying under 5. So are we having people move here because of our low taxes? In some cases, yes, even though they're looking at the gate to get a house as being expensive. But when we're looking at, you know, really being so upset that our teachers are being paid so much, we're not the highest-paid teachers in the area, and people are choosing to go to Scarsdale with tremendously high taxes, to Rye, to Rye Brook, and other areas, regardless of what the taxes are that they're paying. So we have to look at what we're doing to maintain the highest quality of education that we can, and the best source we have is our teachers and our curriculum. And in some cases, moving to the common core has been a great stress on the teachers. They have to learn a whole nother way of looking at education. And it can be better, perhaps, and we'll see, but I really want to be a booster for the education, and that we shouldn't be looking to say, oh, let's cut and save a little money, when if we do go to arbitration, I'm sure they'll raise everything, because we are paying the lowest taxes, I think it is, in the area, if not in that range of being in the lowest. Thank you.
Further discussion on item 5. David Detchen, District 10.
I'm speaking now as a member of the RTM, not as chairman of the Labor Contracts Committee. I want to remind you all of the remarks I made in regard to the police contract in regard to the arbitration process and the baseball arbitration that we have here. The fact is that the overall wage settlement in this particular contract is actually lower than the overall wage settlement in six other districts in this area that were settled in September. The problem we have here is not so much with this particular contract, it's with the contracts that this town and this RTM has consistently approved over the years. That's what's accumulating into this relatively high, relatively high salaries that we're paying in this town. In fact, your Labor Contracts Committee, a number of years ago, urged this committee, urged this RTM to vote no and to send to arbitration a teacher's contract which had GWIs and overall wage costs that were 4% or the likes. This RTM, in its infinite wisdom, decided not to take the advice of your Labor Contracts Committee at that time, and you, in fact, approved it. This is an issue, I fear, that will not be resolved through the negotiation of a particular contract. As Joan Caldwell pointed out earlier this evening, this is a fundamental issue that's going to require an examination of the budgetary process and what we do in this town in order to bring costs under control.
Thank you. Further discussion on item 5. Is there someone, Dr. Carlson, District 1. If there's anyone else interested in speaking, I invite you to come down and have a seat at the front.
Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM, until 2008, you had something like 40 or 50-years worth of inflation. Then we got into this questionable recession/depression period, and that ended about 2012. Now what we're happening is there's a discussion about deflation coming over from Europe. The financial papers are full of it. The internet is full of it, and the market has reacted very negatively at the thought of deflation coming into this country. The thinking is that the CPI will finally become negative in the future. A very good idea of handling these contracts is to try to think about what's going to happen in the future. The evidence suggests that we're headed into a mildly deflationary period. Why treat the teachers so royally? They were handled very nicely through the period of the Depression with about a 3.5% increase per year by contract. Now, Governor Malloy, when he was mayor of Stanford, gave them nothing in the black year 2010. I suggest you turn down this contract. It is too rich. It is too rich going forward. And I suggest that if you don't pay attention to the financial papers and the financial markets, you do so, it will help you in figuring out what you should do with these labor contracts. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion on item 5. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, item number 5, and proceed to poll your delegation? I would like to mention that with our meeting this month, the RTM has now concluded its 81st year of operation, having started in 1933, the last 10 of which have been broadcast on the local Greenwich community television station, GCTV, which, at least on my provider, is Channel 79. And much of that is due to the efforts of Paul Curtis, who, again, is leading the effort And Don Conway is here as well. He has also helped carry these broadcasts. All right. That being the last item to come before us tonight, we will await the result of the vote before proceeding to adjourn our meeting. We have the result of the vote on the Board of Education contract, item 5. Those in favor, 97; opposed, 69; abstaining, 10. That item is carried. There being no further business to come before the meeting, an absent objection, this meeting stands adjourned upon unanimous consent. Thank you all for coming. Have a safe trip home.